Just a second.
I'll be.
All right. Okay, where do I go? All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Would you join me in our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. We have time for public comment. If we have anyone who would like to address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Folks had a chance to look at the agenda. And I know that we have a couple of things to add. Andrew?
Yes, we have two changes. The first is, both are under my item. The first is, for the appointments, we are going to remove the Economic Development Authority appointment at this time and come back with that at a later date. And we are going to add an item after the proclamation for County Staff Appreciation Day to discuss a bid for the 701, 711 civil property.
Madam Chair, move the agenda with the adjustments.
All right, I hear a motion for the changes. Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions for Andrew on these two changes to the agenda? Questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been approved. Then we move on to the board minutes of July 6.
I'll move them minutes, Madam Chair.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Had that opportunity to look them over. We have a motion, any discussion on the minutes of two weeks ago. Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The board minutes have been approved. Okay. Then, now we have the honor of awarding years of service to three of our county employees. The first of which is Colette Sikola. For five years of dedicated service as an elections clerk. Colette is not here. Okay, we'll set that one to the side. Then we have Roxanne Lux. For 15 years of dedicated service in the Sheriff's Reserve Posse. But I don't see Roxanne here. But we'll make sure these folks receive their certificates. And then we have a third one today for 20 years, and this is Heather Zeal. And that is a person from our Meeker County Public Health. She's a nurse there. But those folks are not here today. All right. I don't know, is that Cory, something that you make sure these are delivered to our people? Okay, well, congratulations and a huge thank you to these folks for their many years of service. Okay. Then we have Heather. You would like to
Sure.
Come to the table and we'll hear your presentation.
For sure.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm Heather Jeszretz. I am the community's I was just going to mention how there was no microphone. But I didn't want to point out the opposite. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, Heather Jeszretz, United Community Action Partnership, or sometimes known as UCAP. I'm the Community Services Director. And I'm here today to specifically talk about our FHPP, Family Homeless Assistance Prevention Program. It's a two-year grant that we write, and so every two years we come in front of the county commissioner boards to seek support in the resolution of us applying for the funds. This year, our application was submitted for two, just under $2 million. I'll also say that UCAP is a nine-county agency. Many of you have heard us come talk about the whole array of services we do. And we're going to actually come back here soon for some other purposes. So I'll focus on this today. But we're a nine-county agency. In the world of housing, we actually cover 13, which is all the way down to South Dakota, or over to South Dakota, all the way down to Iowa. And then for this specific grant, we're a lead grantee. So when I say $2 million, we actually also include Prairie Five Community Action, which is directly to the west of our service area. So for this grant, we're looking at 18 counties. Okay? And Prairie Five has been a sub-grantee for over a decade now, and it's worked out very well. We apply for these funds to assist families with first month's rent, damage deposit, back rent, homeless prevention, mortgage assistance. We can also help sometimes with transportation needs, utility deposits, and other things of the sort, basically to take people who are either homeless and stabilize them into housing, or who are at risk of imminent homelessness and stabilizing them in their current home. The grant that we're seeking funds for runs from October 1st of 2021 through September 30th, 2023. And the funds are split out between all of the counties mentioned equally. So not that we can't utilize funds from other areas, but you know, we don't look at population. So if we say, well, Meeker is maybe a smaller community or county than Candy High County, we still offer the same funds initially if we receive the funding to Meeker County as well. So that's actually good. Now, some of you might say, okay, Heather, this sounds really familiar with what emergency assistance that Social Services does. So why do we need both? Why are we supporting both? There are oftentimes when a family's need exceeds what any one of our providers can do individually. And so we work collectively and partner together sometimes to meet the need of the family. We work really closely with Social Services, making sure that we're not duplicating anything that they would have to offer, but that we are working collectively with them to meet the family's needs within Meeker County. The support of this resolution does not require any financial resources of the county. We are simply here asking today for your support in the idea, the concept, the need throughout Meeker County and the families that we serve, and that you support us in writing this grant. And actually, the RFP has already came out. We've submitted it, but in order to receive an award at the end, we have to have support from our county boards to actually accept the funds if received them.
Madam Chair, move to adopt Resolution 2021-18, Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Program.
Second. We have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just have a quick question.
Yeah.
Do you think we've created a bit of a mess with the moratorium? Maybe it's going to be coming to a
Another two-years extension on not paying rent?
They didn't extend that.
Well, this would be for two years.
So, so this, I will not give an opinion on the moratorium, and I will not give an opinion on Rent Help Min, because that is not my role in being here. What? What I will tell you.
I would need to have a lot of people coming in looking for help.
So what I will tell you is this, that the fundings we're seeking through our Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Programming is no way, shape, or form tied to the moratorium, the effects of COVID, or the residual effects that we're going to see from the moratorium. These were funds that we applied for previous to COVID, that we've already seen these needs for families. Also, in order to utilize these funds, there will be some prerequisites of needing to utilize other services. They have to be able to show a budget to meet their needs moving forward. There's income guidelines where a lot of the assistance programs tied around COVID have not had necessarily an income guideline, and so the accountability hasn't necessarily been tied in. The federal poverty guideline we follow with this specific program is 200% of the federal poverty level. You also do have to show means to pay rent moving forward. So we're not going to assist now. I think that we're going to have a ton of people knocking on our door. And we already are. To stay focused and for time, we are an assister of the Rent Help Min program. So we assist people in applying. We know the struggles that that has been. But yes, we do know that there's going to be issues, and not only issues with people paying rent, but there's going to be concerns with housing shortage that's already there.
Your criteria hasn't changed, is what you said?
Our criteria for this program has not changed at all due to COVID. We're planning to run the program specifically what it was intended pre-COVID, assisting those families who really are in a bind as far as being able to afford the stability of their housing or move forward into stable housing. I'll tell you, the biggest concern we're going to see with this is finding affordable housing that is actually available to families. Because right now with the housing shortage, the rent is crazy, and it's just unaffordable to many of the families that are within the federal poverty guidelines we'd be looking at. But our guidelines have not changed, and yes, I do think it's going to be interesting, but we're ready for that.
How long has this program been in effect?
We've applied for this funding for over 17 years. I've been at UCAP or through Heartland, whatever, for almost 20. And it's, yeah, so since the beginning, since 17 years is my and it's been a really successful, it's a great program. And it's not ongoing, I'll say that lastly. No, we've already proved it, but it's kind of a one-to-two-time deal to get them stabilized, and then it's done. So families access it to stabilize, and then they're off. It's not an ongoing program. And all funds paid directly to vendors too, never to the families directly.
And this is a program that you apply for every two years?
Yep.
So the board has done resolutions for this in the past?
Every time, all two years. And we've received wonderful support across the board. UCAP feels very supported by the Meeker County Board, and we appreciate that, so. Any other questions?
Anything in addition? Heather, any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote on the resolution, and it will be by roll call. And Cory, would you please?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheeplebine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Oberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddison?
Yes. Motion, resolution carries.
Perfect, thank you guys so much. Have a great day.
Thanks, Heather. And we have Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brian Cruz, County Sheriff, just one item before you this morning, and that's the acceptance of a $10,000 grant. That's specifically donated for armored vehicle upgrade, and I'll give you a quick background on that. So this year, we have a budgeted a budget item of $15,000 to acquire an armored vehicle. What we learned after acquiring the vehicle is that because of the price of steel and everything else, the cost of that has doubled. So we had a couple of, there's another donation coming at the next board meeting. Couple donations from people stepping up wanting us to get that completed, and that's what this is for.
I'll make a motion to approve to accept the anonymous donation of $10,000 for the armored vehicle.
Very good, do I hear a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion. Any additional discussion?
The only thing that, you know, we may want to say in case this person was watching on YouTube or sees it in the paper, a thank you to this anonymous individual for making this donation.
Very good. Tell me, what would the uses for an armored vehicle entail?
So the main use of an armored vehicle, there's two, it's twofold. It's public safety protection. It's also the, so we're a part of Candy High County SWAT, Candy Meeker SWAT, and it's used in those situations where it's a high-risk, high-entry. We don't know what they have, and we want to get close to the home or building or wherever it is with protection. So it's for safety of those officers as well.
If I remember, there was a grant, a federal grant that you received to get the vehicle.
We did not get the grant, but we budgeted $15,000 out of our budget. It's acquired from the government, it's on loan from the government. So it's about a $200,000, a $200,000 vehicle we got for nothing. We just have to upgrade it and get it outfitted and ready to go.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any additional questions for Brian?
Are these donations atypical?
Yeah, yeah, we don't see these very often. There's a connection, there's a connection to an employee who mentioned that we were short, and that got that ball rolling, so.
Yeah, I thought this was kind of interesting. Haven't seen one. It's wonderful. All right. Well, any additional questions or comments? Then we will take the vote. All those in favor of the motion of accepting the $10,000 donation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Amy?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Amy Roach, county assessor, and I am requesting our approval of the promotion of Emily Nelson from appraiser trainee to appraiser, Level B 23, Step 2, at 2242 an hour effective as of July 1, 2021. Emily has completed her coursework and her experience, which takes one year of all the classes that she needed, learning mass appraisal, and one year of experience in the field. She is a great asset in our office. She has additional help, which she needs to, and she thinks quickly. The reason why I went back to July 1 was as of June 1, she has been here a year, but our assessor license starts every July 1, and the state board of assessors did not meet until July 13 to be able to approve that, which she would have been approved in June if they would have met in June. So that is further retroactive date of July 1, but her anniversary date will remain the same as June 1.
Take the motion, approve the promotion of Emily Nelson to appraiser, position Level B 23, Step 2.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion or questions?
I just have one. Amy, where, do we know where Emily currently is? What step?
She would be, I think she would be a B 22. Step 2, I think. Yeah, she would be B 22, Step 2.
And that's pretty much where these folks are hired at when they come to us? And then, then they have a year of training, and then that moves them on the chart. You've got this many years and this education, and then you come to this point, and
Yep, if they have no license when they start, they'll start as a trainee. Correct.
Okay. All right, any additional questions for Amy? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Phil?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Phil Schmals, Public Works Director. One item for you this morning. It's to consider the approval of our 2021 pavement marking program. We do pavement markings annually. It typically covers about half of the paint we have on our county state aid system. This year, we also have some work included for the City of Litchfield and Forest Ferry Township as they requested to get some pavement markings done too. So we got two quotes. Low quote was from Traffic Marking Services for $114,036.34. The vast majority of that is for the county work. So I would recommend award to Traffic Marking Services out of Maple Lake.
I'll make a motion to approve the board bid to Traffic Marking Services out of Maple Lake for $114,036.34.
I'll second.
We have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion?
9,000 gallons.
I just hit the math on that, too.
I mean, I saw that, I looked at it. But that's, that's really three passes to us, not 500. It's 1,500, because they have to do each one and then down the center.
Yep, they'll do it in two passes, because in one pass, they'll do center line and edge, and the other pass, they'll come back and hit the edge. But yeah, you're talking about four lines of paint, if you include the skip and the solid in the center, depending on the passing of the area.
It's a third of a gallon a foot. I've seen that, too.
It's a lot of paint.
And we do leverage our pavement markings with federal safety money whenever we can. You'll see, almost annually, we'll have a H sip pavement marking project. Last year, we had two, this year, we have none. But certain roads that meet various risk factors, we can get federal safety money.
Okay, any additional questions for Phil? All right, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
One thing I'd like to say is that the townships in my district were really happy with your presentation. It's nice to see that township's starting to trust the county again in terms of that. I mean, it made a big impact, at least in my little area, so.
Good to hear. Thank you. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Don, it's next.
Good morning, I'm Don Duffner, the Meeker County Veterans here.
Good morning.
Veteran service officer. I am requesting an approval for our new Veterans Information Management System, VetPro, by Panoramic Software. Right now, we have a, the software we use is in-house, not in-house, but it's called VIMS, Veterans Information Management System through, from VIIS, and that's down in Georgia. They, they in there, they give us updates, put updates into our system right now. It's an old system, it's over 20 years old, and it's, we have lots of problem with it, but we're dealing with it right now, and this is the newest ones out there. Currently, there's two other, or three other counties just in the local area, Wright County, Stearns County, and Benton County that are using it. They just started this within the last year and a half. So it's being used all over the United States, from California to Georgia and all over. So the biggest thing is, it's a web-based one, so there is no IT support in that aspect. They are going to handle everything. Here with the one we have for VIMS is that one, we have to go ahead and we have to get updates all the time. If they don't work, then we have to call down there, and then the IT, and they have to work together for this to make it happen. And it also allows us electronic transfer to our stakeholders, which are American Legion of EFW and DAV, and State of Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs. It's a part of our claims group that's up at the city, so that we can straight, send it right up to them, and they can go push it into the, verify it, and push it into the VA system. Makes it a lot quicker in that aspect. We also, right now, we pay $750 for VIMS, and that is once a year. We're going to probably keep that for one year to make sure everything transfers over, because they said for this cost of $450 per person, $900 per year, then we'll do the transfer of everything out of VIMS into VetPro itself, which is a really good deal in that aspect.
Now, when you say per person, does that mean both you and Linda on your equipment?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
So
If I may?
Yes.
I imagine you've got quite a bit of sensitive information that goes into this.
Absolutely, very, very much so.
And with that, Randy, did you have a chance to look at the service or the agreement to make sure that we have the adequate security?
Yes, I did last fall, and I also had contact with Wright County as they had already been working on it. And so instead of reinventing the wheel, I worked with them, and we both changed the language with VetPro consisted with what the counties would need for it to pass muster here.
The last question I have is, is there any setup or conversion fees?
Oh, they said, right now, they're still doing a promotional up here in Minnesota, because they're trying to get it moved into Minnesota as a possibility. Right now, Minnesota uses VIMS and Vetrospect itself. We had VIMS for 20, over 20 years, so.
Yeah, the only reason I asked was number 11, and that's sort of, that agreement states that it was waived. Setup conversion training fees are waived during the COVID quarantine. And I thought, are we still quarantined? But if it's a promotional
Yep.
I'll make a motion for approval of a new Veteran Information Management System, VetPro, by Panoramic Software.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Very good. We have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Any more questions for Don? Hearing none, we will take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don.
Sorry.
Hello, Paul. You're next.
But Social Services, my goodness, you guys are going fast this morning. Let me put, let me put the brakes on that. Oh, goodness gracious.
I just changed my vote to no one.
I was driving into work this morning, and I was smelling the fresh country air, sharing the inside of my vehicle with a couple little bumblebees that decided to catch a ride.
Are you going to take them back home?
Yeah.
I know, I let them out in the front yard here.
Don't swat those, they're important, let them go.
They are, they are.
Back and forth, back and forth.
The diversion. The first order of business I have for you is to approve the hire of full-time social worker Sarah Nelson at C41, Step 1, effective July 26.
This is a replacement, correct?
Yes, correct.
Make a motion to hire a full-time social service worker, Sarah Nelson, C41, Step 1, Step 1, effective July 26.
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion, hearing Sarah?
I asked this in person, though, I think, that there's no way to quite replace any person or replace them.
No, this is a
I always want to put it out there just in case.
This is a
Randy's going, no, so, okay, got it.
This is a point person, this is our truancy position, and this is an area that we really use as early identification for families that may be struggling. But it's also a very important position for us in maintaining our partnerships with our school districts. This social worker actually does spend time in each of our school districts working with our school personnel to help support children, particularly when we're identifying that they're not showing up. This is a program that needs some growth, yes.
And have some of those responsibilities changed because of COVID? Children are at home, how does this person?
We did have some difficulties with COVID in how the schools were identifying truancy because of the virtual learning model. However, we're back on track. Starting this spring, we started to see a real resurgence of referrals for truancy cases from the school districts, and so we're in summer break right now, so we're kind of taking a breath, trying to work out on our paperwork, figuring out how we're going to ensure that the schools have the appropriate supports that they need to be successful in working with these students, and how we can support families to ensure that their children are going to school, and any other needs that they may have. Usually, truancy is a symptom of other concerns that are going on.
And she will work with all school districts within Meeker County, not just Litchfield?
Yep.
Any additional questions for Paul? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The next order of business I have before you is to approve our accounts payable.
I'll make a motion to approve the social service accounts payable.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion, it has been seconded. Are there any questions?
I have one, I saw on there. I just need an explanation. I'm glad we sent you an email, but Woodland Center, $144,000, and then is that, it had a date of 12/31.
So we pay Woodland Centers through our purchase of services contract biannually, so twice a year, so it would have been
This is the second half payment?
Yep. We did pay, pay ahead during the pandemic, one quarter.
Do we have any additional questions or discussion for Paul?
Either Harry stepping up his game.
No, I don't think that's the case, but I'll take it, but I don't think that's the case.
Was his game that low before?
Yeah, right.
Accepted, gracious.
Yes.
Oh, right. Well, if there is no additional discussion, we will take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much for your time this morning.
Very good. Barb.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Greg. I'm Tony Auditor, and I have one item, um, again, for, uh, an event. Actually, I have one on my desk that's even too late for this board, too. Forest City Thrashers will be doing their event on August twenty-one, twenty-two, and are asking for, uh, three, two on purpose.
Madam Chair, I make a move to approve, uh, three, two for the Thrashers.
Alright. Do we hear a second?
I'll second that, Chair.
Good. We have a motion, and is there any discussion?
This is the one that all the commissioners need to put on their calendar, correct?
Possibly.
They normally call to sell tickets.
Yeah, spent a couple hours in to take a booth.
Oh, okay.
Kind of fun, actually.
Yeah.
Now, is this run the same weekend as the stockade?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. But it isn't.
Actually, we worked in, I should clarify, we worked on the stockade side of the street.
Okay.
People get upset because they can't go across the road with the same ticket. Sometimes it gets a little about that.
But it's good PR.
I'm kidding, they're pretty good.
It's good PR, and commissioners have done it for a long time, but Steve is right.
Alright. Well, any additional discussion or questions? Alright, then we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is back to forfeit property, and first, I want to talk about the one that had repurchased. Everything fell in place beautifully. As a matter of fact, on Wednesday morning, lo and behold, the landowner from Missouri called me, and we had a fairly lengthy discussion on his business and his lack of getting mail. The payments came perfect, so it was really a win-win situation for the county to not have to deal with that problem. You did. And I had not heard from him, and, and it, the color ID was his name, so I mean, I, everything was very sincere, I, I was really, really happy, I said, now you come out of the woodwork, but it was great, it was great to hear from. Um, the second item, um, that I want to talk about is another forfeit property, and I think you probably read through and looked at what I was doing there. So, we attempted to sell that little strip that has been there since two thousand thirteen. We believe the intent of that at one time was for a road right-of-way situation for that road. Greenleaf Township allowed for it to go to a sale, it never sold. So, I've been after Greenleaf Township for a while, saying, what should we do? Will you assist me in attaching it to the other landowner that's surrounding that property? But instead, they indicated they really had an intent to need that property for a future, uh, road widening, and then would not have to be going out to acquire that. So, I met with their council, or the council, their supervisors, last week. They are offering one dollar to purchase that property, and it meets all the criteria of a government sale in, um, the motion that I'm asking you to make. So, this has been on the books since two thousand thirteen. The county board may sell tax forfeit property to a government subdivision, therefore that might request. And it is two hundred and ninety-seven feet by forty-seven feet, not usable for anyone else, and when it's on our inventory, people constantly are calling, you know, what could they do with that little piece of land, which is really ridiculous for us? So, I believe I would like to see you, uh, accept their offer of one dollar, they will be paying all the fees, and it will go off our, our forfeit inventory and be an asset for them in the future.
It would not be taxable?
It would, it'd stay exempt for them.
And it can't be, you can't build on it, you can't.
Absolutely not. They can't do anything with it, they can't even park a little tent on it, it's, it's just the road right-of-way and the intent. From what we can tell, it's been in the, um, the landowner that you see it surrounding the little picture, it's been, uh, an exempt on their property for twenty-plus years as they sell it. So, it's, there was an intent, and we believe it was right-of-way.
Madam Chair, move to approve the sale, tax forfeit parcel number eleven dash zero two five three thousand, to Greenleaf Township for the base fee, one dollar, plus associated fees.
Do I hear a second?
Uh, second that motion.
Thank you, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Any questions for Barb?
There's nobody else coming by the land, or on to the road right-of-way like that, so.
Right, the original landowner had that option, you know, to include it in, has and hasn't.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then the payables for today.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, payables.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion, it has been seconded. Any questions, comments for Barb?
Curiosity questions, there's one for a dental?
We do do dental in, in the, uh, jail when there is an issue.
Oh, okay.
And that was a two oh one, so I'm sure that was an inmate that had an issue.
Okay, and then the one, uh, the one committee or whatever, the, gives a per diem of a hundred bucks?
The planning commission.
I didn't know that.
They spend more time in their actions, and yes, they have a higher per diem.
Okay.
They sometimes make visits, visits, so take a day or something.
Oh, gotcha.
They're, they're just, right?
Right, they, they did that a number of years ago, really felt that they were putting in a lot of time when they're, uh, working on their.
That must've been before me, I don't recall.
I don't remember, I, I recall it, but it was, it's been a while that they have been bumped.
Yep.
Any additional questions, discussion for Barb? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Morning.
Good morning.
Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. This morning for the board, I've got, uh, two items, a conditional use permit and a memorandum of support or agreement. First one up is a CUP for Casey of Arberell, Spur Island. And as for a CUP to move one, ten cubic yards of material in the shoreline district with the shore impact zone development, this is an after-the-fact CUP. Um, this item actually is brought to our attention by a neighbor. Let's go back. There's a site plan after the fact of the project. Brought in about twenty cubic yards of rock, the walls, five cubic yards of riprap. We utilized twenty-eight cubic yards that were already on site, um, two cubic yards of steps, three cubic yards of river rock, and sixty cubic yards of soil. So, total material they brought on the property is about ninety yards. Additional thirty, thirty-three yards that were reworked on the property. It's pretty, it was a pretty nice project, actually, when set and done, um, but it was after the fact. We didn't get notified until actually the day that they were completing it and seeding the grass around the, uh, the property.
What notified them?
A neighbor, neighbor about three doors down, not the next-door neighbors, but neighbors.
Why'd they wait so long?
Well, that was a question that was brought up, because that neighbor was.
Not that it's their job, you know, it's curious.
So, basically, it started, I got a permit, but they went over, they exceed, the project turned into more than they thought.
They didn't realize it.
And they didn't come back to upgrade the permit, just.
Not to upgrade the permit, it, there would, never was a permit until the end of the day. You know, to me, that's a responsibility partly of the landowner?
And partly of the contractor.
Just needs knowing what the, what the requirements are.
So, there was no, I, I wasn't following that, there was no permit?
No, there's no permit.
I thought they exceeded the parameters.
And the contractor was at the meeting, and he explained that the, the project started small and kept on expanding, expanding, and he didn't want to demobilize his equipment and come back later in time, so he just kept on rolling with the project, and it kept up more and bigger.
Semi-o project.
It's easy, it's hard for.
Got the grass, and he didn't want to see something.
Got it all done and completed.
We've had this discussion for years about what the penalty should be, and is it high enough?
What, yeah, what is?
My other thought is, it's their property, and I didn't. How often does this happen?
I think it'd be a lot more often.
Every year, huh?
I got another one this month coming up.
Every time they get turned in, though.
So, I mean, we don't always know, it's like.
No.
We don't know, that's the issue.
What, what is the penalty?
It's doubled, doubled the CUP costs, so it's nine hundred and ninety-two, it's extra four hundred and ninety-six dollars, it's currently. And we did discuss that at the end of the commissioner's meeting on whether we should increase that or not.
But the work was, uh, was on scope, I mean.
Yes, yes, on scope, yep, correct, yep.
He was aware he needed a permit, made that to a certain point.
Well, the contractor certainly was. This is a, this is a new ownership, s- some people just recently had bought this property, and I think we're finding that's probably the, the general rules, a lot of these new owners don't realize they need permits for this landscaping projects, it seems to be the way it kind of rolls.
But when they get a permit, you ensure that they know that they have to protect the water, so they're putting out the barrier. Some of these things are covered when they get the permit, so, you know, not getting one, some shortcuts can be taken that, you know.
Yeah. No, it's.
I don't know what, how punitive it could be, I mean, yes, it can be as punitive as it might be, but. You're like, well, probably.
I'm always concerned about how will it affect the quality of the lake? And if the DNR gets involved with that, and, and Greg, what, how, how does that work? We, we have to go in and get a permit, when does the DNR become involved with?
The DNR is notified of all shoreline projects.
Okay.
They're notified, and they have a chance, usually send out notification two weeks before the meeting, so they have a chance to comment.
That comes from you.
We send that to the DNR.
You don't know about the DNR.
Yeah, exactly. Sometimes the conservation officers will let us know when they're driving around their boats and that, they'll notice things, they'll give us a tip, and they'll call it in, and then we'll go out and, or enforcement officers will go out and look at the project, and then we'll send letters to the, to the owners if we think that they've done more than ten cubic yards of, of work in the shoreline district.
I wonder if there's educations we could do with lake associations, or have, they already done that, or, so that they go to their annual meeting or whatever and say, so everybody's aware that lives on this lake, or, you know, maybe, is that a possibility? I mean, I, do people do this on purpose, because they don't want to wait? Or is it, it turns out they're wrong, and that, which is a good excuse to break this grant, yeah, that's a whole, she's saying, yeah, I don't know.
Oh, and one little question I'd like with the, with the fine or penalty, is if you get too aggressive, then they refuse to pay, and then they take you to court, and Randy's really happy with this board for having too aggressive about that. Yeah, I mean, there's, now you spend time and energy, so.
Is some of this, is some of this education? Do people know what they're supposed to do when they own so many yards? Would it help to go to lake associations and make sure they're educating their people?
I can always speak to the Lake Island one.
Right.
And we actually, at our annual meeting, always remind everyone, if you're doing anything, you need a permit, and if you're not sure, go ask. Just simply call them.
Do they, do the lake associations, I know a newsletter or something, too?
Yeah, they.
Kind of, usually, then all stuff they put in there, just.
And perhaps maybe something you could consider is an article to the dockside magazine, which goes to every lake owner.
Home owner on the lake.
Twice a year.
He said lake owner. Home owner on the lake.
But, you know, that may be a possibility to do some advertising on this, but correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, most of these after-the-facts CUPs do come on lake shore property.
Correct.
I see, correct.
So, you have folks from, let's say, Minneapolis, just for an example, that buy a lake shore place, and they do the repair, aren't real current on the regulations, so I think it still falls back on that contractor to be saying, okay, in this particular case, we need to, need to get a permit.
Well, and ever, even realtors, when they sell a piece of lake property, they have some information to say, here, so you know, you know, they usually know some thing's gonna have to be done when you do this, this is what you have to do. Maybe they have to, um, put more information forward in some form, like lake associations, even if people tell you, I don't know, to make sure that everybody's aware.
How far in advance do people apply or need to apply before the work is done?
Well, they can apply the day, day before, but it.
But they can't.
It, it takes us a while to go through the process and get it on the system.
That's why they.
The system's usually, we, it runs to six weeks out, we'd like to see this stuff, so we can get it on the agenda, I guess.
So, they start with a small project, and it turns out to be a bigger one, and they want to stop what they're doing, and so they're breaking, and decide to pick up.
Greg and I were visiting ten cubic yards, this one dump truck.
Basically, yep.
You go around the lakes and you look at these landscaping projects, they're huge. And does every landscaping project need board approval? Does, would all of those come before this board?
If it's greater than a dump truck load, you know, roughly ten cubic yards, it should, should have, if it hasn't.
Right, and Greg, that's moving ten cubic yards, not bringing it or taking it.
It's either way, it's either moving or bringing it, yeah.
Yeah.
Either way.
We see, I don't know, what would your guess be? We see one, one out of ten, maybe, of the projects, as you ride around the lakes and you see all of these landscaping projects, and I'm thinking.
We see more than ten, I, I don't know.
Over the year, but I don't know. I'm not gonna speculate.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't know what that.
I mean, it seems that we always have one.
I think we see less than.
Yeah.
Yep.
During summer, you usually have two or three every month in the summertime that are coming through.
With the ten cubic yards, that went, whoa, that's one dump truck.
It's not a lot of material.
No.
When you think about it.
I was, I was surprised.
But it's there for protection, yes, for water.
Yep.
You gotta remember that, so.
Yep.
Andrew, maybe you can, and Greg can work on some ways to make sure the public is informed, because I think some of them might be purposeful, and I think some people don't know.
I think it should come through lake associations, AIS, maybe.
Good idea, just get some information out.
And that's where you're gonna get the people.
Maybe get all the electors.
We're not, we can do what we want, and we're not gonna hit.
And it might, and it might not change anything, because those who don't care with permits will not do permits, and those who do, you'd think the landscaper would know, but I get it, too.
Pretty much, I think.
It is what it is, I guess, I don't know.
If you want to penalize somebody, penalize the landscaper. You don't put a penalty against him, if he knows it's gonna cost him actually five hundred bucks, or something. Just an idea, you know, he might say, oh, you could pull the permit. I'm not putting my skin in the game.
How many electricians will work on your house without filing for a permit, even if it's one circuit they're putting in? Always get a permit, you know?
Building projects.
That might not be necessarily true. Anyway, I'll make a motion to.
No, no comment on that one.
Bird Island.
We have a motion?
And I'll second that.
There's a second? Okay, we have a motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item I have up, a approval to support, uh, memorandum of agreement for the South Fork of the Crow River, one watershed, one plan, planning area thirteen. So, this is an agreement, memorandum of agreement to apply for planning grant for this summer, and it's between, let me bring this up here. There are tendencies between McLeod Counties, Rendill County, Meeker County, KNOI County, Wright County, and respective boards of the Soil Water Conservation Districts, respective boards of the supervisors, the City of Winstead, and Buffalo Creek Watershed District. So, back in two thousand and twenty, Meeker County expressed, uh, an intent, and signed an intent to participate in the one watershed planning and supporting planning grant application for the Board of Water, Soil, and Water Resources for this Buffalo Creek Watershed District, South Fork Crow River. So, McLeod County is, is taking the, uh. So McLeod County is, is taking the, is taking kind of the initiative on this project, and, and they're gonna be the financial agent and the grant administrator for the purposes of this agreement. So far, as of last Thursday, all counties have signed, had signed this except ourselves, and Carver County, Carver County had it on their board last Thursday. So everybody else has, has already signed this memorandum of agreement. Currently, Meeker County occupies about twenty-five point two percent of the jurisdictional land area for the South Fork Crow River Planning Area thirteen, that they're talking about on the map up there.
Gary, I was just gonna, I think you said that we signed this in twenty twenty, but this was September eighteen.
Yeah, eighteen was in North Fork.
Okay.
Yeah, North Fork, or this is South Fork.
All right.
Yep. So in twenty twenty, you signed a planning grant application back in June of twenty twenty for the South Fork.
Now, it says here, at this point, eleven of the parties have signed on this agreement. How many total are there?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. And we're two of them, we're the commissioners yourselves, and the Soil Water Conservation District is another entity from Meeker County, so we are two of the entities that haven't signed.
Okay.
I have a message off to McLeod County, and McLeod, or Carver had signed, but he had gotten back to me yet today, so.
And this.
The watershed, you.
Yeah, I'm, it, pretty much in the dark in terms of this totally, I've only been on, had one meeting, so whatever Mike did ahead of time, I think, is, and.
Th- th- this is a separate watershed.
This is a South Fork.
Yeah, this is a completely different watershed.
This isn't one part of one watershed, one plan, though?
So there's three separate one watershed, one plans.
Okay.
This is a separate watershed.
There's a North Fork, South Fork, and the Mississippi that we just.
Oh, okay, then Mike was, probably wasn't even on that, this one, then.
Correct, yes, this is completely different from the other plans.
Okay, I, I'll be honest, yeah.
Maybe you have agreed this with North Fork.
North Fork.
And the Mississippi.
Sippy and, and South Fork, too.
And the planning committee for this one has not been established yet, because we're waiting for the grant money to come in first, and so Commissioner Johnson and I had a conversation, since this is in his area, that he may have an interest in taking part in this one, when that one comes up.
Is this something that's agreed upon, is it every three years?
I'm not sure. I think it's a one-time thing, we, we agree to be a part of this group.
One and done, or?
So this is just like what we signed for the Mississippi one.
For the Mississippi, exactly.
Gotcha, okay, so this is totally new.
That's why you're in the darkness.
Yeah, exactly, I was gonna say, I was like, I don't know any of this going on, holy crap.
So, we need to do this to get grant money, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to approve the South Fork Crow River Watershed Management Plan.
I will second that motion.
Now, is this a motion, or is this a resolution?
It's a memorandum of agreements, so it's just a motion.
It's a memorandum of agreement.
It's a motion.
Would it be a motion?
It's a motion.
Okay.
This.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, this is a memorandum of agreement to develop a joint comprehensive waters management plan.
I just don't recall this before, it must have happened before us.
Uh, we, I knew we talked about it, I think, I was under, well, we did it in twenty twenty, and I was thinking about this, I think I was thinking this was part of the.
North Fork.
How, how come none of us are, were involved in that original thing, because I thought, I, when we did the Mississippi, I thought I actually, I got to meet those people, you know, virtually.
Mississippi has a lot more meetings than.
Oh, do they?
Fork or the South Fork has.
Oh, gotcha. I, I just didn't know, that way, if, once Paul does get on this, so he's on that policy committee, which is important, I think, is so, we have our say in it, you know, that's the important thing.
Paul Johnson, District Three, will be on this board.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah. I seconded third of that motion after being on watershed meetings.
And Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Soil and Water Conservation District has been involved with this.
Yes, they're the ones that could take the lead on this. Soil Conservation, Joe Norman.
I think we've kinda talked about this with some of the others, I mean. It's uncomfortable, it makes you going into it basically because of lack of understanding or information that we get, for kind of a formality in the process.
Yeah, if you don't.
Can I say that lacklusterly, I mean, I'm not, I wish we were a little, had a little more information to go on, but we really don't get a whole lot.
But Joe Norman is fully versed, understands it.
Right.
So, commissioners, I received an email back in June from Joe Norman, and he included in his email that the SWCD board has approved the MOA pending legal review and approval. So, they definitely have some input in it, review of the agreement.
Who, who is the legal review, is that?
Me, and, and each entities. They were sending, they were getting it out early enough, because they know each attorney tends to have their own opinions on what they want included, so they sent it out with plenty of time.
So the watershed, those are good attorneys, that's what I was.
Correct.
So.
That's key.
They are still awaiting your legal review, so they have not signed it, they have made approval pending your legal review.
And I have informed them that I approved the, the MOU as drafted. I believe that it's already been signed and approved by McLeod County, is that what you shared?
Yeah, McLeod signed it, yeah, they signed it early on, June.
I think he said there's, or said there's two of that.
It's to Carver and ourselves, and I want you to, had not yet signed it as of last Thursday, and Carver had it on their agenda last Thursday.
So this has been looked over by Kale, more than likely, for membership, maybe not, that's for an attorney.
Kale from Rinkland?
Vander, yeah.
Not that I'm aware of. So each.
They usually do that.
Each, each county, each county attorney usually is the legal advisor for the specific SWCDs.
Oh, okay.
So they send it out to each county attorney, I believe there was a city that was included in this.
Winston, City of Winston.
I'm assuming their city attorney reviewed it as well, so they send it out to each entity.
Okay, so Rinkland is not way in there.
Not that I'm aware of, unless they specifically seek out legal review or outside counsel.
Okay.
Otherwise, they get billed for that, this way the SWCD is not getting billed for my time, except for through the county.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It says that Meeker County occupies twenty-five point two percent of this land area. Do we then pay twenty-five percent of any costs incurred through this, or is it spread out evenly among the thirteen?
No, spread out, through that grant, yeah, the entities, it's through the grant, you know, they get awarded. So it is, there's no cost to, um, to us. According to our jurisdictional land area, no more than anybody else.
Comes out of the state taxes.
Yeah, I believe it does, I believe it does, I, I haven't seen a grant come through, so I don't know how that works.
Because I'm thinking thirteen entities, but we occupy twenty-five percent, so then do we get stuck with one-fourth of the costs, or is there equal sharing?
This is the first question for Commissioner Johnson.
Oh, yeah.
Are you taking notes, Paul?
Yeah.
Write that down, yeah. Okay. Any additional questions?
I do think it is important to be on that policy committee, though, just so we have our say, kidding aside, I think that's important, especially when it's that part, and that way you keep them in check, and so they do things, you know, not crazy.
Any other questions? Greg?
Greg Janz is still the, is the chair of the Southwest Watershed District.
I don't know that, I haven't seen him long.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Fun.
Any other questions on the motion? All right, then we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, so bless you guys.
Excuse me.
There you go. All right.
Thank you.
And we have Mikel.
Oh, Greg, watch your foot.
Whoops, whoops, you're tangled up in the cord there.
I forgot to Phil proof it this time, sorry.
Yeah, that's. Phil set up a snare trap.
Hi, Mikel.
Good morning, Mikel Johnson, Human Resources Coordinator. Uh, this morning I have for you the, um, the ratification of the Min P licensed contract, so that has the licensed deputies, investigators, and the courthouse security checkpoint officer. So this would be our final contract for this, um, session, so that would be nice to have these done for us a little bit at least. Um, what this contract does is it, uh, has the same two percent cost of living adjustment for twenty-one and twenty-two that the other contracts have. Uh, updated health insurance language, uh, we did the same general language updating as far as updating protected classes, adding management rate language, removing the fair share language, and we added a mediation step to the grievance language. Uh, this increases the on-call pay from two hundred dollars a month to two hundred and fifty dollars per month. It changes the, how the uniform allowance is handled, so right now it's all a unified system, and this would be changing that all new hires would get the uniform upon hire, and then after the first year of employment, uh, on the third pay period of each year, it would be an eight hundred and fifty dollar uniform allowance check. Uh, this also added the good standing language to vacation severance and added sunset language to the deferred sick or cruel benefit.
How many unions are represented within Meeker County?
We have eight contracts, and then we have, is it four? ASME, Min P, LELS, Teamsters, four. Four actual unions, and then eight contracts underneath that.
Explain to me, added good standing language to vacation severance, whatever, so that means they have to be an employee. Explain that to me.
Yep, so that was a, that was something that we tried to add to all the contracts this year, so basically, it defines what good standing is, and that they need to be in good standing to get the payout, and if they are not in good standing, then they do not get the payout.
So it depends on the conditions that they're living under.
Right.
And sunset language to the deferred sick, that means?
So that means after December thirty-first of two thousand twenty, that employees, new employees hired after that will no longer qualify for getting the deferred sick, which basically is, once you meet that eight hundred hour max of the regular sick, then the additional was going into a deferred sick leave bank. So employees that are hired after December thirty-first of two thousand twenty no longer get that additional deferred bank.
But the rest of the employees are grandfathered in?
Correct, yep.
And we give them eight hundred and fifty dollars whether they need a, a, a uniform or not, then.
Yep.
Peace, though.
Is it a use it or lose it?
I was surprised that we didn't.
No.
That was really our biggest.
Yep.
It's cash.
They're given cash, and however they spend it, they spend it, oh, really, it doesn't.
But there's something in there, if they have a tattered shirt, they can say, you need to go buy one.
Well, there is still, there's still a, a policy, a standard, yep.
Otherwise, everything is basically. Make a motion to ratify the two thousand twenty-one, I mean, two Min P licensed deputies, investigators, courthouse security checkpoint officer.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion, it has been seconded, is there any additional discussion?
I would just make a comment, but, uh, Mikel, you know, we're just settling this final contract, and that, I would say we start negotiations while you're here. So, a two-year contract, you get about a hundred years grace, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
By the time you get them all settled.
It'll feel like we're back at this again in no time.
It's, it's constant.
Yeah.
It's a constant.
Yeah.
And oftentimes backpedaling, too, sometimes, at least it used to be with the teachers' union, it was always backpedaling.
I heard it tough to deal.
Yeah. I resemble that. I've got bad shoulders, yeah. Any additional comments, questions, or snide remarks?
I have a couple, but I'm gonna reserve them for later. Yeah, another day, maybe.
See what I have to do.
I love how much you guys laugh up here, it's great.
It is good, it is all good, much appreciated. Well, I believe we will take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mikel.
All right, our next item is a, uh, reappointment to the Clearwater Watershed District, and that is Robert Chief Abine has applied for reappointment.
Sounds a little sketchy.
I thought you were waiting for the snide to go. No, it's gonna.
Just get warmed up.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Robert Chief Abine to the Clearwater Watershed District Board. He's been on several years.
Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Um, is there any discussion? Questions or comments? All right, then we will take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, all right. And we tabled until further.
Yep.
The additional.
So our next item is, um, a recommended proclamation, uh, for County Staff Appreciation Day. The governor, uh, last week or the week before, uh, declared July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, a staff, county staff appreciation day, um, in recognition of all of the work that, uh, county staff have done across the state, uh, throughout the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Uh, AMC has put together a, um, a sample proclamation, uh, that they're suggesting county boards consider, uh, taking on as well to, um, recognize their staffs as well, and so we have that in, in front of you, uh, today. Um, and, yeah, that available for any questions.
Do you need a motion on this, or?
I think having a motion would be, would be nice.
I move to pass the proclamation of County Staff Appreciation Day.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, any additional questions? All right, we will take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And just so you're aware, we're working up something nice for our staff as well, and so we're gonna try and recognize people.
I wonder, will there be treats at various workstations, or?
We have some ideas.
Some ideas, good, good deal.
Uh, next is discussion about the seven-one, seven-eleven Sibley Avenue site. As you recall, this property we had, uh, put up for sale, we had noticed in the paper for three weeks, um, at, per statute, we requested a minimum bid of two hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, we did receive, um, kind of a last minute, uh, bid. It was only one bid that we received, and it was from this, uh, company called the Overland Group out of Alabama. Uh, they have submitted a bid for the property for two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and they've indicated that their intent is to develop the property as a Dollar General store. Uh, they intend to present to Dollar General in early fall or late summer, and if approved, they would work towards being fully permitted by early spring to begin construction. So that's what they've indicated to us on their bid. Uh, as, uh, the county board, you have the ability to decide to accept the bid or reject the bid, uh, if we reject the bid, we have some options, we could go back and, um, you know, go through the bid process again, see if we can identify other bidders, uh, or we could work with a, a Realtor to market the property to, um, commercial developers. So, um, those are, those are your choices that are here for you.
So if we used a Realtor to market the property, I'm just doing a quick math at.
So if we used a realtor to market the property, I'm just doing a quick math, at six percent, we'd pay fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars, of which we may potentially get another bid for two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Potential.
More or less.
More or less.
Fifteen thousand dollars less.
Um, statute requires that we cannot sell it through a realtor for less than ninety percent of the appraised value, which I believe in total is around a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, so it could be less than that.
And it was advertised for the required three weeks?
Correct.
In all of this?
We had, we had three interested parties reach out to me individually prior to the property being put up for sale. I reached out to them, um, individually as well, let them know that we were doing this, sent them the bid package. Uh, this happened to be one of the groups who reached out to me, um, previously, so.
My only question is, if we ask you, is a Dollar General took lots of money from Family Dollar?
Is that a city issue then?
I don't think so. I mean, it could be a something issue.
Yes.
They know it's a thing they would have putting it up.
So I checked with the city, um, the property is, uh, zoned in their B-three roadside business district, uh, and a retail use which a Dollar General would fit in is a permitted use, and so as long as they're able to meet all of the other zoning requirements for parking and setbacks, they would be able to do so by right. So they wouldn't need other approval from the city other than a building permit.
I did take a look, and it appears that similar things in this commercial thing generate about six to seven thousand dollars in real estate taxes per year, so. Once it's sold and developed, you know, it will be a, it will be taxable.
Yeah, I mean, I have a, I mean, if you sit on it, you might be just sitting there and not getting any taxes. Feel bad for Family Dollar, but that's, Dollar Generals are doing that in every town there is, and I don't think you can really stop that, or I don't think it's, you know.
You're probably right. Andrew and I just talked about, I guess I have, thinking there might be some, something else, but there, there's some needs that we have, but you're probably right, I mean, it's something else, we decided to sell it, we probably, I don't know, but.
Man.
So, so an option that we do have is, you know, we could do a, a work session where as a board, we brainstorm ideas for some things that we think are good uses for the site, and then work with, uh, a realtor to market those uses to, um, the development community and see if someone's interested in coming forward and purchasing the property to do that. Um, certainly the risks that we have there is we sit on the property for longer, uh, and those uses might not come forward in a timely basis, but if we do do that, we potentially could get a use that, you know, the county board is excited about, so.
But once it's sold, it is no longer a county issue, it belongs to city, the city will be the one.
And I'm sure they're not gonna stop them, I mean, they're, they're only issue maybe parking, but I doubt it.
We would lose any say because we're out of the picture.
Correct.
I can tell you a little bit, Eden Valley has a Dollar General, and Dollar General comes in with three, basically three, uh, sized buildings, and Eden Valley built the seven thousand square foot building is what they put on, it's a lot smaller, a lot than that, but less parking, this would probably, I'm assuming would be their nine thousand dollar build it, or their nine thousand square foot building based on the city population. So, and the Dollar General actually are, are these, this Alabama group is, they, they buy it, they develop it, they permit it, they do all that, and then Dollar General actually agrees to the contract, and then Dollar General leases the building from this group, that's kinda how it works. Um, but, uh, they've lived up to their end of obligation in Eden Valley, and, you know,
They're in every little town between here and Alabama, yeah, I mean, they're just.
Their, their, their business model seems to be.
I'm a little surprised they're putting them where the Family Dollar's goes at home, or however, some people can't drive, so it's certainly good for them on that end, but, um, I see a lot of people walking, and I guess it isn't our decision.
It would be the city, city would have to talk that over.
Does the Overland Group do other projects besides Dollar General? Cause they could switch gears after sold and perhaps find something that's more potential career profit for them. I'm just wondering if they have other.
I think they have, um.
I would say with their, their intent is there, and it's gonna be up before, probably before January one, you'll be walking through there already. Very quick.
We've had it off the tax rolls a few years.
I can look and see what it was previously.
Or else that might not tell us much, cause I wasn't familiar enough.
And any, any tax dollars generated off of this piece of property go to the city of Witsfield, right?
No, it's.
With the?
We get a portion of it.
Yeah.
A portion would come, but.
Yeah. I- it's same way with the school district would get a portion, a- any taxing district that has authority over this would, would get a portion.
I really don't know what else really is to say either.
The other piece I would say is this, they're not asking for abatement, they're not, you know, they're not asking for TIF, they're not asking for.
They take pretty good care of their property, but when I, when I drive my, I think they do the.
Cause they're all new.
Yeah.
There's not hills on the market.
No.
No, they, they do a pretty good job. But, but, you know, many businesses come before us asking for help.
Oh, yeah.
Unhered or come with cash in hand.
We should be making the motion next year.
I'll make the motion to approve the sale of a lot to, uh, the Overland Group, takes up the bid for two hundred and forty-five thousand.
And, uh, second that motion, madam chair.
Is there closing costs of things that are in carton, or?
Yeah, any of that we would, that would be negotiated as part of the, um, purchase agreement, so we'll.
You do that?
Yeah, we're heading on my schedule.
Also know that, that's almost.
They have not indicated that, so we'll, we'll be in touch with them, uh, now that we have the direction from the county board to do this, and work with them to finalize the sale.
And does that motion include the intended sale is for a Dollar General?
Yes, it does.
Oh, it does?
Do, do we need to do that?
I didn't see that.
Yeah.
Because?
Why would we need to do that?
What if this business comes in and says they wanna turn around and sell it again? Or what if the city doesn't approve of that?
Maybe they wanna put an off sale with it.
Do we have to, do we have to designate, or just fail? And once it's out of our hands, it's out of our hands.
I don't think you have to designate that, I think that as long as you're acknowledging the fact that that's the intended use, but certainly the intended use could change, depending on zoning.
Would you like to rephrase your motion, Steve?
Yeah, it's just intended use would be for the sale to the Overland Group for the , not the Dollar General. That's the information provided to us, that's what we got, right?
For the dollar figure of, what was that again, in?
Two hundred and forty-five.
Two forty-five.
I still second that motion.
You'll second that one. All right, we have a motion, it has been seconded. Any additional discussion or questions? Then we'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, and then the only item that I have for my report today is that, um, I received an email from the city administrator from the city of Witsfield late last night indicating that at their meeting, uh, their council passed a motion, uh, to meet with county staff and commissioners, um, as a joint committee for a abatement request, uh, from a residential developer. So, um, I believe our process in the past is from the county side, it's been the county administrator, the, um, EDA director, as well as the two commissioners from the, the EDA. So as long as there's no other discussion on that or concern about that, we'll move forward in that direction.
Same, I had a couple calls from, one call for sure about that specifically from one of the council people, and they, it was TISC for, I think, what we, I say. They wanna have a joint committee to see who's gonna do the tax abatement, so wanted to know what we had already done, and I did not know, I said, I, I probably.
I got it.
As we, did you get a call?
Yeah.
Beth and Steve, you represent the council on EDA?
No, I, I do not.
Oh.
Yeah.
You two guys are on the EDA?
That's why I passed it.
Oh, sure, sure.
But I do feel, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be as politically correct as I can here, I think it is time for the city to step up and start doing something, some things before we lose the housing.
I guess, and my, you know, I have my two cents here, uh, in my discussion, I said it, you know, I asked him, I said, then make sure that they reached out to Watkins and to Eden Valley, cause every city does it a little bit different, there's, you know, everybody's checkbook looks a little different.
Well, he's built some in Eden Valley, hasn't he, already?
He's, Watkins is just about done, and he's about to break ground.
I mean, I think it's an idea to work together, but, but getting, yeah, but I think everybody has to have some skin in this game, and Witsfield is the hub, and we're going in.
I, I question how involved we get, that was, I mean, I'll listen to you, I'll sit down, and we'll do the math, but.
I think he, they think the E, and DEA, EDA does have some responsibility, obviously, but we have to decide as a city, I think, what we're gonna do for more housing. I, I'm sure that's what they're.
And DEA is aware of any of those projects, so I mean, Lisa's fully in, in the loop on that.
Very good. Question for Andrew, um, we met with the city some time ago talking about the positive changes to dwell, did anything further come out of that? I know Phil and your man were gonna meet.
With, with the state, um, I haven't heard an update on that yet.
Have you guys had meetings or anything?
I haven't been part of that, I know that Phil and the city engineer were gonna be meeting, meeting with the state, they have a regular meeting to discuss different projects that are going on, so I can follow up and get a, a follow up with.
Just curious which way they were leaning, whether it was gonna be a traffic light or around the ball, or.
I, I too have received some questions about this housing development, and I was down and visited with Greg, and he gave me a map, because I was curious, is any part of this proposal within county boundaries, but it's all within city boundaries? But we will still have representation on this committee to talk about this new housing through the EDA.
Yeah, EDA will be involved.
Are you talking about the extra territorial, or what are you talking about?
The housing project.
Just this, this housing project.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I can, I, well, I'm talking about the EDA, I did sign off on the last, uh, EDA had borrowed, uh, number one, um, monies for four housing projects, and they signed the last one, they're all paid back, and the EDA did not have to kick in extra money. That was kinda part of that process, because the housing sold for more than what the initial, uh, plan was, so, so there was no additional fund, and all loans are paid back, and they're signed off.
Very good.
I believe they're gonna look at another four, over behind the Eagles Club or in that area, so.
All right. Well, I believe we have a motion, it has been seconded, and, um, is there any additional discussion?
Sure, motion, yeah.
No.
We don't have a motion, really.
We, we, we don't need to, we don't need to deal with this one. Okay, we are.
Don't like it, though.
Yeah, it did. All right, that was just part of your report about formulating a committee and representation. Okay.
Yep.
All righty. What else have you got, Andrew, anything for us?
That concludes my, my report.
Then we can move on to our commissioner committee, uh, reports. I only have two.
I'll, I'll keep going if you want, cause I just did my EDA.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Steve, yeah.
Keep the ball rolling.
Sure.
Yeah, um, childcare, had a childcare, uh, Zoom meeting sat in on, um, they, they're looking, they're still trying to identify the needs through surveys, um, with the local childcare providers, about twenty-five to thirty providers within Meeker County. I don't exactly, I don't remember what the breakdown between daycare centers and private providers, what those numbers are exactly, but, uh.
We have two centers.
Two centers, okay. Yeah, Andrew and Beth were both on that, on that zone too, so I had one hand there, but, um, just looking at identifying the needs, yeah, trying to formulate, uh, you know, they have some funding sources available, um, and trying to find a direction, which way to, to target, and direct some of the, what, how they should help them, and that's been, in my estimation, kind of a, an uncertainty. Um, we did talk about that on EDA as well, um, is trying to help some of these private, the, uh, private daycare centers, maybe with some of the upgrades they need to get their home ready, whether it be egress windows, um, maybe fencing, or, or different things, or the host of restrictions from the state seems to be the biggest hindrance, or one of the biggest hindrances to private daycare providers with all the rules and regulations, so trying to, EDA talk about trying to target, um, any funds that we would make available or grants, or loans that, um, we can help them get certified and, and get their homes or areas up to, up to certification standard. Other than that, that between EDA and childcare, that's all I have.
Yeah, I can go next, I played hooky on two committees, didn't go to either one, and I don't have a, a report. I think I had EDA and Woodlands, and I was, uh, gone, so.
Can we get an report on, on that? What was the temperature where you were average?
The temperature where I was playing hooky was average was sixty, and it rained almost every day, so it was almost, I was almost ready to pull every hair out of my head, it's gone, looking at our radar, so. That's my report on that, so.
You're not supposed to look at the radar, Dan.
Oh, God, you, you don't know me very well, then. Made a lovely time for my wife, I can tell you that. But that's all I got.
All right, well, I have two. Of course, on Tuesday, July sixth, we had our regular meeting, and then the next day, Wednesday, July seventh, I had my aquatic invasive species, and Paul, you, you're on that one with me. It was our first face-to-face gathering, it was held here in the boardroom. They still offer some virtual options, and there were a couple of folks who attended virtually. They updated us on washing stations around the county, checking of boats, various landings, things seem to be going okay. These are great opportunities for, to educate lake users. Uh, there are a hundred and seven lakes in Meeker County. Three of those lakes have zebra mussels, Minibel, Washington, and Stella. Uh, Minibel is the most trafficked lake in Meeker County, and nine of those one hundred and seven lakes have some form of an aquatic invasive species of other types. I, I just thought that was interesting information. The budget needs for next year are being addressed, they're contemplating some media ideas for greater education of, of folks who use our lakes, that was discussed. I suggested that they use more social media and that they use our Bas Lea people to make certain they are well-educated, because they travel many of our lakes. Paul, anything you want to add to that?
We purchased a decontamination unit, which is over on Mayville, and when they set it up, uh, they got immediate complaints from the neighbors because it's very, very loud. So I took a run over there, cause I wanted to see where they put it, and they put it in probably the only place they could, because you have to be able to drive through, have enough room to get your, your vehicle ahead of the trailer and get the trailer on the decontamination unit, but it does reside right next to a person's residence. But I think that noise problem has somewhat been abated because, um, it was mostly created during the training period, the way it sounds. But I think that noise problem has somewhat been abated because, um, it was mostly created during the training period, the way it sounds.
Where it was running almost constantly.
Almost all day and constantly, yeah. So now it's on an occasional basis. It's a very nice looking unit. They got the trailer sitting right there. They set it up, they monitor it. So it's a good one to, it's a good asset for that lake, having as much issue as they have in Minibel.
And hopefully the neighbor was accommodating to that, understanding that it's a benefit to the lake.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I had a meeting that Thursday, July eighth. It was for, um, McLeod, Meeker, and Sibley, the three-way public health committee. It was held over Zoom. Uh, some folks were face-to-face in Glencoe, but many of us chose to be virtual. They're talking about moving the date later in the month so that their financial reports can be updated. That was kind of a, a stickler. Why have the meeting if the reports can't be included? Financial statements were not updated. Some corrections needed to be addressed, so they were tabled until the next meeting. There was an update on the legislative action. A bill was passed that will increase funding opportunities for public health to the tune of about thirty percent increase. This hasn't happened since the late eighties. Some money grants, committee people, um, were very pleased with this. So that, that was a boost for the three-way public health. All three counties reported a great slowdown in COVID issues. They're calling it demobilization. Pharmacies are giving shots. Clinics are pretty much done. Testing is pretty much done. Meeker is at forty-eight percent vaccinated, which is a disappointment to our public health people. And the other two counties are just about at fifty percent. Beth, you were on that committee with me. Do you have anything to add?
No, not, not really. I, I'm also on the finance meeting and our committee ended after to talk about the thirty percent increase that we're getting from a local public, from the public health grant, how we should distribute that money, what we should, what should we use it for. So we're meeting again because it changes the budget. There, there's some needs that, that the C H S needs, but I'm hoping, my idea would be that we just split it so the county can do what they need with the money. But thus, I, with Meeker, I think it would be a amount of about fourteen thousand dollars. So we're gonna meet again in September and, uh, see what to do with that. So that's all I have.
Great. And my next meeting is the local public health meeting and that's tomorrow morning at eight o'clock at the Family Services Building. And that's my report.
Well, we've already reported on I A S, so I'll skip that.
Sure.
Beth and I had a C C T meeting in Weller. It was nice to meet all those individuals because it was an in-person one and, and, uh, you know, you see the people on virtual, they look different when you probably see them grill. But I think the thing that always continues to strike me is the amount of ridership that we have on C C T in Meeker County. With Gando High being so much bigger, they run an average of about nineteen hundred ridership, uh, per week, and we run about thirteen hundred. So you start looking at size, um, I think that's pretty respectable.
Well, yeah, also their rides include big details for the other stuff that we don't do, so.
That's about four hundred of them. So, so we do, we do well. So it is an important, um, factor in Meeker County for our folks. They continue to have problems with acquiring the new buses because they just aren't available. And the, correct me if I'm wrong, our, our oldest one on the fleet is two hundred and thirty thousand miles.
Yeah. Well, now you know, that's a lot better than the used one.
Yeah.
Before the pandemic, we were really getting caught up on buses. So I think we had like eight buses coming. They just, they take forever.
And then we went over the budget for, started working on the budget for next year. That was interesting, going line by line and going through that. And, uh, I think the director had really put together a, a good budget and presented it well, very smoothly and, um, but she got the, the key things. My next one was my little trip down to the Intercontinental Hotel in St. Paul, um, in my Ford F-150 with a clearance going into the parking ramp of five foot nine inches. So you don't quite make it in that parking, you know, so. But, uh, really, really interesting. I was just there Wednesday, uh, afternoon and Thursday morning. Uh, we started out with the, uh, state demographer, who put on a presentation, uh, about how the demographics were changing. And we'll start getting some numbers in August. Uh, we won't get the numbers of our own districts until after the first of the year, which will leave us a very short time if we need to do a redistricting, so. Second one was successfully navigating the open meeting law. That was very interesting because one speaker says one thing and then they get up, the next speaker says, well, as long as you do this, you're okay. And it's like, wait a minute now, this is directly in contrast to what was said one hour earlier. But, you know, it's kind of a little bit to interpretation, not that that interpretation is correct. Am I saying that correctly, Brandy?
Yes.
Yeah. Then we went into ethics for, um, commissioners and staff and Attorney Scott Anderson was there. And, uh, he's great to listen to. He's, he's one of these fellows that walks around, he's throwing his hands around and talking and then, but he got his point across. And the only point I want to bring back to, to our board is if we are on a ditch, if we have a ditch in our area and you have any type of association with that ditch, it's better not to be on it at all. There's nothing that says you can't, but he recommends stay away from being on that ditch. Steve and I started my first year, first month as a commissioner out with.
Five days.
Five days in, with someone from another county who Steve asked the, the question of him during the meeting. You know, should he be on? Because he did have a benefit from this ditch. And he stayed on and, um, that question came up directly to this Mr. Anderson and he said, no, no, no. Just don't even be on the committee. So he was interesting, uh, to listen to, very fun. The following day though, um, we started out with Roger Reinhardt, um, parliamentary procedure and, um, this guy's got more credentials than, do you know him, Brandy? Oh, okay, because he is, um, heavily credentialed and he went through things. He's been in the legislature. He's, oh, he's been on everything. And he just went through all of the areas that can get us into some difficulty. And he said, if we ever have a meeting coming up where we believe it's gonna be full and hostile, to please give him a call. He works with AMC. He's got some tips and tricks to help control those type of meetings. And he said, my services are free. Just call. He said, I'd be glad to help you through those. So hopefully we don't have one of those.
No.
But should we have an occasion, we may want to avail ourselves of that. And then, um, we had how to get involved in AMC's legislative process and welcome to the arena, uh, tips for success and growth as an elected official. And then we had a, um, video made by Commissioner Fox from Brenco County and Commissioner Carter from Ramsey County. What a drastic difference in the day and life of a commissioner from Brenco County to Ramsey County. I mean, she was on the run. She is Melvin Carter's mother, Mayor, Mayor Carter from St. Paul. So, um, it was a little twenty-minute video. It was really interesting to see, uh, the differences, you know? There's Bob out there. He's got the photographer and one other person in the car and they're driving around the different sites in the county. She's up there on Metro Transit, moving around all these different committees. I mean, it's just, you know, the, the whole concept of being a county commissioner in Meeker County or Brenco County entirely different from what they do in the, in the larger ones, but, um, I really felt it was a well-spent time. I didn't stay Thursday afternoon because they were doing that Myers-Briggs type stuff, you know, I hate being analyzed, so.
Leave that up to the other commissioners. We'll take care of that.
Changes every time.
Hopefully I have to say it came out about the same as it always has. So, um, yeah, that was good and, and, um, it was interesting to sit on, on the first night. I was with Rich, uh, the AMC president and Nathan Schmalls from McLeod County. And to hear the differences about how they work. Down in McLeod County, they get thirty-five cents a mile. That's their reimbursement for mileage. And I said, why? He said, well, I'm not sure. But, you know, everybody else is at the fed rate of fifty-six, but they're at thirty-five. So, you know, it was just interesting. If they have meetings on a given day in McLeod County, uh, more than one, they go over three hours, they get a higher per diem rate. So it's, it's just interesting to hear the way the differences are between county, county, county.
Sure.
And then you go to breakfast and you start, start talking about the big issues. We all got the same issues. Social services, sheriff's office, all of the things that we work on every, every single meeting at the other counties. But that's it.
I have a question. How often do they do the demographics, this first presenter, and then how often would that initiate a potential redistricting?
Well, every ten years, if it's census.
It, it goes along with the census, so.
The state demographer, Susan Brower, has a staff of three people, including herself. And that's their entire staff. She was just, uh, she was really nice to listen to. She, uh, had one of those dry sense of humor, so she would fire her men every now and then. Everybody's like, is she serious or not? And she laughed. Of course, we knew then she wasn't, but she was very pleasant to talk to or to listen to and made a really good presentation. She's gonna be sending out, all of the presenters are gonna be sending out a PowerPoint and as soon as I get those, I will share them with all of you, um, just so you have them. The one that's gonna be toughest is the demographer because she, she talks so much about her slides. There was no information with it. So I don't know how you're looking at the slide and not hearing her present. It's gonna be difficult. The others had packets and so forth that came with them, so.
Madam Chair, may I, um, I just wanted to comment that Scott Anderson is the attorney outside counsel that's hired by M C I T to cover our gun range dispute that we're in. So the litigation that we have, he is representing. We can count on that. So he's been in contact with Greg, um, zoning and myself almost bi-weekly.
Interesting.
Yes. I enjoy working with him. Great experience.
You know, every single thing he presented was case law.
Yes.
There was no hypotheticals. Whenever someone would ask him a question, he'd go with his three ring finger, would do it. This is the case law on this one. You know, so you knew he wasn't making the step up on the con. He was gonna write the case law.
Actual examples.
Why did I think we were done with the gun range?
Because this is the third shot at it now.
Pun intended.
So they, they're.
Yes. There's another appeal. Um, the appellate time, they have thirty days, August, I think it was eighteenth. They should have a response brief. We'll know what the legal arguments will be on this one.
Very surprised.
Uh, when I talked to Attorney Anderson, he wasn't necessarily surprised, but, um, based upon their pattern, but it's currently under litigation, so.
Okay, I got it.
I was, I didn't commission when we moved that one forward. I remember that. That was a full house at me.
Very good. Anything else, Paul?
That's it for me.
Beth.
It pays to be last. So C H B I was at with, like I said, revising the next year's budget. Also, we're looking for a part, project harmony coach. And then they were talking about some technical issues that print are not being able to print in Meeker because I don't know why. I don't know if it's operational or if it's a professional issue in other county, I don't know.
I don't know. This is the first.
It's older to go, you know. Did, did you remember that conversation or maybe that was in finance committee?
Okay.
Um, C C T, same deal. The only thing also is, I brought up, we've been talking about, uh, C C T being able to build directly to Prime West so that our social service, but, because Rand Billen wanted that and so did Meeker, but she said that now they found out that you have to be a certified vendor. So we're probably not gonna be able to do it. And then the legislation also redefined the volunteer definition of a volunteer driver, which is gonna help because we have less volunteer drivers because they remain on, they're quarter income, et cetera, under salaries. So they've changed some of that. I also have the childcare task force. Do you have that well? Um, I had a personnel meeting for supporting hands, um, in Patworth, we're working, worked on a telecommunicate, tele policy. You know what I'm saying? And, uh, the, and staff increases, we're working toward, well, we were gonna go to fully merit, but that's not working out, so. We've got some standards and we're talking about starting at a percent, then adding or taking compared kind of performance, but not all the way. Somebody automatically gets something. Because some of the jobs, he's been working on this for two years. It's really difficult to get a little bit of merit, so we'll see how that goes. Uh, I also have Woodland. I had an executive finances and walls of board meeting. They're very close to becoming a license for C C B H C, which is gonna make a big difference in how they pay. Some of them, it can make a difference from two fifty to six fifty a day. So we don't know where, where she'll fall in the range. I think they're ahead of the curve getting it in. Hopefully we'll hear by January. And that could decrease our purchase of service agreement, what we have to pay every year, depending on how that works out. So there's gonna be a one percent increase for the, um, purchase of service, which is something we agreed on a couple of years ago, rather. We never increased it and then we started losing employees because we weren't able, we weren't keeping up the raises. So incrementally, we had decided to raise, so it's gonna be one percent this year, but that won't include, um, crisis and detox. That will stay the same. And then we have some outside, um, counties that come in that are in the catchment area that we charge so much a day and they're gonna work on contracts with them, so. In other words, if you're gonna, I statute, apparently they have to have crisis and a detox available to them. Some of these little counties never use them, some do. So they're gonna private a, a fee for a contract for them, or if you're gonna use those, this is gonna cost you plus for eight, so. That's just crisis and, um, detox is a really a big loser and it hasn't been very busy, so they're just trying to figure out what to do with it. Also through legislation, telehealth was expanded, so we can be paid for that. And that's what all there. And then yesterday I had a H R A meeting and the main conversation was about that eight plex percent. So they had met with, and I don't know, Andrew, if you wanna talk about, you had a meeting with Lisa and Carla.
Yeah. Yeah, Lisa Graffington, Carla and I had a, had a meeting to talk about, um, the H R A is potentially interested in purchasing a, um, eight plex of, uh, one-bedroom apartments in Eden Valley that are currently, uh, low income, uh, or income-based housing. That the individual who owns them is looking to, you know, retire and sell the property and, um, so we had a discussion about how the H R A could potentially purchase that property, uh, primarily focusing on, um, the suggestions that Lisa and I had were focusing on the H R A taking on debt to do that. Uh, and I think Carla was more interested in, um, the E D A or the county purchasing it outright, up fronting the money for that. So we're continuing to have discussions about that and looking at performance and how that would impact and if there's a gap and how we could potentially work through that, so.
The fear, I think, is after the meeting is, number one, they don't have a lot of money, so they, they, they're afraid they're sold. Lisa said before, you know, they worry about going into that kind of gap. My question to Andrew was, through this rescue, rescue plan, when we do, they'll get it more, uh, get more. Could the county buy and give them the thirty? Could the county buy it and give them a thirty percent? I don't know. But I know that we've decided we don't want to own property, which I agree with. What they're worried about is the little amount. So, and you can help me out here, Andrew, maybe, because I'm so familiar with this. This is, this guy that owns this or whoever owns this now, I don't, do you know who owns it? Doesn't matter. They are under a contract with the USDA, correct? But there's, I think the contract is almost up.
Yeah, there's a rural development mortgage on the property, which has certain restrictions for it as part of this USDA program. And that mortgage is gonna be fully paid off in twenty twenty-three.
So my guess is whoever buys it is probably not gonna stay in this program. So we're gonna create eight openings. I mean, are the people that are there gonna be able to stay there? Probably say no.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because it's probably the rental owner market rate. So that's kind of what they're worried about. If they'd like to keep it in the program. So I, I again, Steve asked her to call you. I think that we have to, in my mind, I think it's, I mean, it's your area. How badly do you need that housing over there for low-income people?
I'm gonna dig into that a little bit more, just, I know, I know the property you're talking about.
She was talking about four hundred, about four hundred and fifteen thousand probably by the time. She figured seven thousand a unit to paint, you'll probably have to carpet, whatever, whatever. And who knows? And then also, they have, they have, there's eight. It's at eight months. Okay, so seven thousand a year, she's got. But she doesn't know. But also they're looking, they're comparing it to places in Alexandria. And I don't get the comparison there because the valley's a lot different.
Yeah, it, it sounds like the owner came up with a per-unit price based on what, you know, other units he owns, has sold for. And so, yeah, I think before the HRA or anyone gets into purchasing it, we'd wanna do an independent appraisal to determine the actual value of the property.
I just feel like maybe it's something that's, that's sure looking interesting. And I also, I don't know what the city, the valley would do or, but I understand that they're predicament because they just don't have a lot of money. But I feel like you can turn a profit. I mean, you could make it go, but then they worry about what if something big goes wrong? Boiler or roof go, you know, are you gonna pay for it? So anyway, I just, if Carla calls, if she'll allow it, I hope you just want to, just a little bit. It's, I'm just learning all this.
So if, if they did buy the HRA, anyone who owns one of those, insurance, they have to have.
A, as far as the, the property owner's insurance, I mean, I would assume that, you know, for example, if this is in the rural development program. Like you have a mortgage, you're required to have homeowner's insurance. I'm sure that the loan requires a certain type of insurance. I don't know what that would necessarily be, but I can't imagine it's too terribly different than any other sort of rental.
John and building.
Yeah.
I just think from the standpoint of liability, if you have tenants, potentially sixteen or more people living under one roof. So if I'm an insurance company, I'm saying, gee, I gotta hire a risk here.
Yeah, I mean, I can say that having previously been a partial owner of a multifamily building. You know, as the association, we owned liability insurance for the building and the common areas. And then each individual owner, or in this case tenant, would need to have insurance to cover their belongings.
Yeah, it's such a.
So.
I think that, I think a big fear is also with everything going on, everybody's selling everything. Because everybody's buying. Now, I, do I think the market's gonna crack? I definitely think it's gonna crack and I think we're probably gonna be in trouble. But I think there's also gonna be a lot of people that aren't gonna have a place to live. Because I mean, rent, rents, there's nowhere to go. And I think that we have to kind of look at all of those people. That's why I brought up, in fact, on the way into the meeting yesterday, it happens to be at the social service building. I walked in with Lana and I said, what do you think? And she said, you know, we, we've been encouraging people all along, keep paying your rent, keep paying your rent, keep paying your rent. But they're predicting a big mess when this is on. Because we don't think people have continued to pay their rent because somebody's saying you don't have to pay your rent. What they didn't understand probably is, but you're gonna have to pay it eventually, so. You know, and if they were working, hopefully they did. But I just think we have to try to protect the low-income. I was gonna, so I'll turn that over to you, Steve, because you're on EDA and that's your area.
I just pulled it up on B.
I haven't even looked at it.
I don't, that's a LLC or, or I don't, the name doesn't mean anything. So I gotta do a little more digging.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
That's what I have. We did that today, ten twenty-nine.
No, we're, well, we're not quite done yet now, but I was going to definitely make a point of pointing to the clock.
Okay, beat you to it.
Yeah. Under miscellaneous monthly fund cash balances here, Andrew, is that a part of?
Just the monthly report.
Just like we have a lot of money compared to last year.
It, it definitely is a, a larger number.
But we also are gonna have a, quite an expenditure on CSAH one. Because that's completely being redone for.
Yeah, and, and that's under the, the highway. So if you look at just the, the revenue fund, yeah, the revenue fund is also up. And we've seen that as a consistent thing over the years, if you look back at twenty seventeen.
Isn't there whatever P money in there too?
Um, I.
Two and a quarter?
No, I believe that's, it's not in the revenue fund. I don't believe so.
Your taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, look at.
I thought fund balance meant.
No, this is, this is specific funds that are highlighted. There's other special revenue funds that are not included in this report. But these are the areas where our primary focus is as we go through the budget process. Because some of the other stuff is restricted and there's not, there's one certain thing we can do.
Gotcha.
Was our revenue up about a million? Did I see here?
Compared, compared to last year, about one point three million, yeah. Part of that could be, you know, some, well, some of it's a little bit of early payments. Because we saw that the first round of tax payments was a little bit higher than we had seen last year. So that's part of it.
I think we have a lot of variables this year with farmers. We don't know how that's gonna be for them for agriculture. Property owners and rental, if they haven't been getting their rent. I mean, I think there's gonna be some things looking differently next year. I hope not.
Potential is there for a lot of issues. Is there any additional business that needs to come before this board today? Other than to point out that this was less than a two-hour meeting? So I'm, I don't know, we're all getting more streamlined here. But that was wonderful. I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'm second that one.
All those in favor?
Aye.